Okay, awesome. Well, welcome everybody. My name is Kelsey Dume. I'm the Brookings Area Chamber of Commerce President and CEO, and happy to be with you this beautiful Saturday morning. So this is the third in the series of three candidate forums we are hosting. The Public Affairs Committee puts these on, and it's a group of, sorry, the Public Affairs Committee is a group of over twenty engaged volunteers from various industries in Brookings, and we're very appreciative of the work they do. The committee prides themselves on hosting fair and informative forums for all of the elections that matter to our membership. So thank you. Recordings of this and the previous two forums are made available to the public on our chamber's YouTube page. And before we get going with today's forum, I'd like to give many thanks to our sponsors who made this possible. We are able to provide these free to the public in addition to our members. And so our premier sponsor this year is the Carrot Seed Kitchen Company. The Carrot Seed is invested in the success of Brookings, and thanks you for participating in our local governmental process. Visit the Carrot Seed Downtown Brookings for cooking tools, knowledge, and culinary inspiration with an extra helping of community engagement. So go check out Kirsten Downtown Brookings' awesome store. Also, thank you to our forum sponsors, Bankstar Financial and SDSU Division of Research and Economic Development. So today, we are joined by the five candidates vying to serve on the Brookings City Council, who you will meet here in a second, as well as our moderator, Andy Foberg, who has passed Chair of the Brookings Area Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, and currently sits as CEO of the South Dakota State University Alumni Association. So each candidate will have two minutes for an opening statement before answering questions submitted to the chamber and organized by topic. We had over sixty questions submitted, and while we won't get to them all, we will turn that entire list of questions over to the candidates after the forum for them to do as they wish with those. So if you'd like to add a question to that list, simply submit it using the Q and A feature, and we'll grab them and add them to that list. In an effort to get to as many questions as possible, we will be limiting answers to one minute, and candidates will have one minute for closing statements at the end. You'll see me go off camera, but I will be keeping time. And if it gets to ten seconds left, I'll just come on and put up my ten seconds left piece of paper and a time. Once you pick your time, and then Andy will take it over from there. Other than that, thank you all so much for joining us today. We look forward to this election on April thirteenth. Without further ado, Andy, take it away.
Well, thank you, Kelsey, and good morning, everyone, and especially thank you to our five candidates for joining us in vying to serve the city of Brookings. Prior to the forum this morning, we drew names to see who would start, and Patty Bacon, we will start with you. You have two minutes for your opening statement.
Thank you. Good morning, and thank you to the Chamber and Public Affairs Committee for hosting, for the Carrot Seed Bankstar Financial, and the SDSU Division of Research and Economic Development for sponsoring this event. Most of you have known me for a long time and are aware of my work on social justice and affordable housing issues. I'm motivated. I promise to be approachable, thoughtful, while serving on the council, if I'm fortunate enough to prevail this time. It is important to me to hear from you. We'll always agree, but we will agree to be civil. This past year, I've proven that I'm not afraid to tackle tough issues, and I'm willing to learn. I could talk at length about COVID and the restrictions we felt were necessary to keep our community as safe as possible. However, this needs to be more than a single-issue campaign. As you know, it's turned into the most contentious council race we've seen in a very long time. Therefore, we must elect candidates who are concerned with the physical, economic, and social well-being of this community. What have I done while, in my previous terms on council? I personally created the Affordable Housing Task Force and brought forth their recommendations. They range from zoning policy to legislative review to financial incentives. The key component to a successful implementation of that was establishing public-private partnerships. I feel strongly that this can work, and we're already seeing evidence of that. We have two affordable housing neighborhoods that have been designed and are in the development stage. I convened sessions with landlords and tenants and had difficult conversations with both. It resulted in a new Renters' Rights and Responsibilities brochure that is distributed in the community on campus. I really thank you for taking the time to join us today and look forward to the conversation.
Thank you, Patty. Next, Nick Schmichael.
Hey, everyone. Thank you, Kelsey, and the chamber for putting this on, Andy for moderating, and all the sponsors. Really appreciate the engagement of the community throughout this process. It's been a, it's been a long one. My name's Nick Schmichael. Just a little bit about myself. I came here in 2003 to come to SDSU. I got my first job here at Natronics and started my business about ten years ago. My wife, Joni, and I live in town with our son Hendricks, and we just enjoy everything this community has to offer. A few things about myself with the city. I've been involved in various volunteer boards over the last three to four years, and have gained a lot of knowledge of the inner-city workings, rapport with city staff, and want to bring that knowledge and base onto city council. Three of the things that I'd like to talk about most or my initiatives in city council, workforce development is one. I'd really like to strengthen our partnerships with the BEDC, SDSU, our large manufacturing, and our small businesses. Those groups are what are going to bring and help the discussion moving forward. Community and campus relationship, and really that involves engaging our students into the community so to have better retention after they graduate. And post-pandemic city finances. I am so tired of talking about COVID, and I am glad there's a light at the end of the tunnel here, but ensuring that our outside agencies are fully funded and, and working as they should, keeping our quality-of-life initiatives intact, but also bringing together new stakeholders to focus on new initiatives and innovative approaches. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Next, we have Nick Wendell.
Thanks, Andy. As Andy noted, my name is Nick, and I've had the privilege of serving on your council since 2016. I'm a native of Gregory, South Dakota. I came to Brookings in the fall of 2000 to enroll in South Dakota State University, and I've called Brookings home for most of the last twenty-one years. I had such a phenomenal experience at SDSU as a student that I went to work there full-time and spent more than ten years as an administrator in the Division of Student Affairs. Since 2017, I have served as our state's first executive director of the South Dakota Board of Technical Education, overseeing and providing support to our state's four technical colleges. Some of my professional passions overlap with my work on the council. I'm passionate about economic and workforce development, passionate about providing education and training opportunities, and providing support to communities, large and small, throughout the state of South Dakota. I've got a thirteen-year-old daughter named Amelia, who is a seventh grader at Nicholson Middle School. I've been involved in our community for a number of years. I'm an active member of the First United Methodist Church. I was a founding member and the first president of Connect 2140. I was a longtime volunteer with Downtown Brookings Incorporated, and in 2015, I founded a nonprofit organization called The Big Blue Birthday Box. When I thought about why I wanted to run for reelection, certainly I had to acknowledge, as we all do, that the last year has been filled with challenges for all of us, but as full of challenges as the last year has been, I believe the years ahead of us are filled with opportunities. Opportunity to invest in important infrastructure, opportunities to support quality-of-life initiatives and amenities that make Brookings a unique city in South Dakota, opportunities and obligations to collaborate, to come together, to pave a path forward as a community, to support our businesses, our students, our healthcare workers, and our whole city in a life beyond COVID. Those are the types of conversations I'm looking forward to having this morning, the types of opportunities I'm looking forward to pursuing in a third term on the council, and looking forward to hearing your questions today. Thanks.
Thank you, Nick. Next, we have Isaiah.
Good morning. Everyone, my name is Isaiah Creviere. A big shout-out to the Chamber of Commerce and the Public Affairs Committee. Thank you so much for your participation in this event and for putting this on, as well as the sponsors. I know that seeing that the businesses in town, we wouldn't be able to do it without our, our small business sponsors as well of our, as well as our large business sponsors. So, so thank you very much for those, and thank you to all you who are tuning in to this forum. It's wonderful having the participation of the community. I grew up in the Brookings area. I graduated from SDSU. Once I finished at SDSU, I moved to Minneapolis. That's where I attended Northwestern Health Sciences University. I left there with my doctorate of chiropractic, and then once finished with my internship, which is our residency program, I moved back to Brookings, and this is where we wanted to, to start our business. We wanted to come back and invest in the community that I grew up in. I'm very passionate about Brookings and the entire Brookings area. My wife's name is Julia. She and I have three children together, Finley, Bear, and Cedar, and they are a great joy to us, and we love what Brookings has to offer. We've been blessed by the Brookings community, not only as a business, but also as a community member. And I want to make sure that we see it thrive in the future. I have been an active community business owner and member. I've been on two local boards. I'm a board member for the Brookings County Youth Mentoring Program, and that's where we seek to build supportive and consistent relationships between the caring adults that we have in our community and some of the youth. I'm also on the Downtown Business District Committee, and that's where we help provide guidance for the downtown Brookings businesses and help, help actually promote events and activities to stimulate a healthy downtown culture. I want to leave you with a couple of things today. I'm a solution-based individual. Part of my job, and not only as a doctor, but also as a business owner, is to find those problems and create those solutions. So I want to make sure that we stick to policy on most of those things when it comes to city council, and so I'm looking forward to serving the community.
Thank you, Isaiah. Next, we have Nate Holden.
Hi, everybody. I'm Nate Holden. Thank you to everybody who's putting this on and helping sponsor. Everybody who's watching this as well. Everybody saying that, we'll just keep it short and sweet there, but I've been on Brookings for twenty-five years, came up here for college, moved around a lot as a kid, lived in a bunch of different states and everything, came to Brookings and fell in love with it. This is my forever home. It's just an amazing community and all the people that I've met and gotten to know over the years through here. I decided to run for city council because I feel like at times in the past and things that I've dealt with or seen with the city councils, not necessarily all just this one, but all sorts of different ones. There's times where it seems to be a small-driven goal of the council and not a wide for the whole city. And so I, I wanted to be a voice of the city and bring back that thought of, of total community awareness, not just a goal for this or a goal for that. And, and I wanted to, to see that transparency and people thinking that they had that voice in there. A lot of different things I'm looking at doing that as far as physically responsible in the government and how we do and spend our money, as well as maybe some outside meetings of things that aren't just city council structured, organized, maybe just casual sit-down here and there where people can ask casual questions, and it's not so structured, and we can kind of get that back out to the thought and process to the city. And I guess ultimately, I want to make Brookings proud again. You know, I first came there, and for quite a few years, everybody was so proud to be from Brookings, and they'd go around to the rest of the state, "Oh, I'm from Brookings, you're nothing." And I feel that's kind of slipped a little bit in the last years, and I want to make everybody kind of have that, that being, whether it's a cockiness or whatever it is, but have that, that kind of attitude that we used to have here, that, hey, I'm from Brookings. Maybe I'm a little better than you, and it kind of, it's a funny thing to say that, but you know, it, it makes you proud of your town when you can kind of be that way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, very good. We're going to move into questions, and they are in random order. As Kelsey stated at the top, we will move through different broad topics, and you will have one minute to answer. Our, Nick, you, Nick Schmichael, you will begin this question. We will start with the restrictions that the Brookings City Council put in place to slow the spread of COVID-19. If you are elected, what changes, if any, would you like to see in these restrictions going forward? Nick?
Yeah, I made a goal at the beginning of this candidacy to reach out to a hundred small business owners. And to me personally, I've never cared about wearing a mask. I wear one to go watch my kid play hockey, and he wears one to go to school. For me, it's really been reaching out and actually making sure we're connecting with those businesses that are being harmed, but also making sure we're being cognitive of what's happening in the community. Two things that have, that I've heard from business owners in town, the, the, the big two things, they wish that city council would have, from the beginning, when restrictions were put in place, started having a conversation of how we get back to normal. And the second thing that I heard the most was agility, being, not putting something in place for sixty-eight, is not really talking about it, and then moving on. So those are the two things I think we really need to reach out and make sure we're connecting with the people that are harmed.
Thank you. Next, Nate Holden.
Um, yeah, I kind of agree a little bit with Nick there. I think honestly, what the city council has done this past year, I know it comes from a good place and things, but to me, it's just a little bit of too much overreach by the government. I think Brookings is smart. Those people are smart. They would social distance. They would wear masks when needed. Businesses would restrict if, if needed for their areas. And in, yeah, you're going to have these, some spots that don't, but I, I think the overreach by the government in doing all this was just a little bit too much. The recommendations, the, we think you should do this. This is what the CD's saying. I think the citizens of Brookings would have been fine with that, and you know, if they hadn't, we could have addressed it then, but the automatic immediate shutdown of businesses, you know, my girlfriend was out of work for, for so long because of that, and how many people struggled, and then we kept these limitations and all this thing on. I think, you know, we've really hurt the citizens of Brookings, and we need to get that off and, and get them back to being able to thrive and do something.
Thank you. Isaiah?
Thank you, Andy. You know, as far as, as the mandates go, you know, the masks, you know, this will most likely not be an issue when it comes to the, the election time. I am looking forward to the future, and I can assure you that anybody whose decisions we on the council make, we will make sure to listen to those who are going to be impacted by those decisions. As far as business restrictions, you know, that is, that is a problem. We have to make sure that businesses are number one communicated with. I spoke to many, many business owners that actually heard from a Facebook post or actually heard from a friend saying, "Hey, you can be open tomorrow." And those are people that are active community members that just didn't attend the meetings. So we have to make sure that whatever decisions we make, we're taking into account those that we're making those decisions for. So as we move forward, I'll be sure to be listening to those who are going to be impacted by those decisions on the city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Isaiah. Patty?
Almost forgot to unmute. This has been a difficult year. COVID has been a really unfortunate situation for all of us. And being on council, we had to step back and take some measures that we didn't want to, but we felt were necessary, and have had a mixed review. Yes, there are people in this community and businesses who are very upset with us for the restrictions we put on, but we've also had a large number of people who have thanked us, both private citizens and businesses who have thanked us for taking those measures. How do we get back to normal? Well, unfortunately, we're still in substantial spread, but we keep an eye on that. We meet with our healthcare experts on a weekly basis to see where we're at. We have remained one of the communities with the lowest infection rate in the state through this entire ordeal. And so I feel that we did the best that we could, and that it did keep our community very safe, so I have no regrets on that part of it.
Thank you. Nick Wendell, to you.
Yeah, I think as we think about how we start to ease back to some sense of normalcy, we started to do, you know, a week ago in a council meeting, we had to pass a new ordinance which lifted capacity limits in businesses, but maintained the mask mandate. We had asked for feedback from community members, and the overwhelming amount of feedback we received from business owners, hourly workers, residents, students was to maintain the mask mandate, but lift the capacity limits. And I think that's a good example of how we continue to be vigilant. We consider the fact that we're still in substantial spread. We encourage mask usage, in particular in indoor spaces, but we lift some of the other restrictions so that we can start to move back toward normalcy. I think we all have some, some goals hanging out there. Chief among them for me is to ensure that Brookings High School and South Dakota State University can have in-person graduation ceremonies in May. I think if we work together over the next couple of weeks and months, we can celebrate some of those milestones together. We approved the Brookings Summer Arts Festival in Pioneer Park this summer. Those are the types of milestone events that I think mark our return to some normalcy and traffic in and out of our community if we can remain vigilant. I think as we see our vaccination rates increase, that's another positive sign that, that some of these restrictions will sunset, and, and we'll move back towards the normalcy, and we've already begun that process.
Thank you. I will let everyone know that was our COVID question. We will move on to other topics. Thanks for the thumbs up. Our next question, Nate Holden, we will start with you. If you are elected, what do you think the city can do to help small businesses?
I guess leaving businesses, little help here, there, push things that you can do, but kind of freeing up restrictions on them from all sorts of things. Like I said, less government oversight and things is, is part of what I want to do. So maybe we need to sit down and what does the city do that makes it a little harder for you to run your business? And if it's something that is, you know, within legality to be able to lift things that the city imposes on people, then we go with something like that. Getting out there and having those discussions with the community and not just at a city council meeting. Like I had said before, I want to have something like, you know, a sit-down where we just kind of can informally meet and get ideas from people. It's not so structured. It's not so driven as a city council meeting. It's just an idea generator that we can then bring those ideas to the city council to see what we can do to help them out.
Thank you. Nick Schmichael.
You know, I'm really happy to hear that the Arts Festival is approved this summer. I think things like that are going to help small businesses town, getting people back into town and exploring all that Brookings has to have. I mean, that inherently getting people here is going to help. I was very happy to see how well the pods have been going at the Swift Health Center for vaccinations. I think that's also going to help get people out there. And continuing to work with the chamber to put events on that can bring people to town, but also bring community members and SDSU students off of campus into the community, get them into the community, but largely, I, I think small businesses are going to end up taking care of themselves. I mean, you've seen some of the innovative things that people have done through this whole process to stay open, to get creative. And I think other than sell, other than putting, helping potential getting people here, the city council isn't going to have much to do with that. I think it's going to be the businesses that take care of themselves.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to Isaiah.
Thank you. I was really happy this question came up, and I'm really actually agreeing with Nick as well, both of the Knicks, the Arts Festival. Super excited about that. That's definitely going to help our smaller, our smaller businesses. But I want to identify some young leaders in our community, whether it's high school or college level, and incorporate some faculty as well that can help identify needs. And the way that my, my process wants to go through, I actually got this from Randy Perry, want to create a survey here in town, and what we're going to do is from that survey, identify needs from the community that businesses can meet. And with that, along with people having the mindset of shopping a little bit more in Brookings, what that'll do is that'll actually increase revenue. So this was actually done in Minor County. They saw an increase after implementing the strategy. That's a county of only about three thousand people. Within one year, they saw their overall revenue increase by about fifteen million dollars. So I'm looking forward to supporting small business through this. We have to have things like events and those type of things to increase traffic here in Brookings.
Thank you. Nick Wendell.
I think one of the ways we, as a city council, can continue to support the business community is continue to partner with our stakeholders in the community, the Brookings Area Chamber of Commerce, the Convention and Visitors Bureau, the support that we're able to provide programmatically and financially to those organizations deeply impacts our business community. Those are folks that have expertise in, in planning events and providing training and guidance for business owners. There are a couple of things that I think we can do, in particular in the heart of our community, as we think about locally-owned businesses in downtown Brookings. I've been a champion for downtown Brookings, funding for the downtown business district for years. Right now, Brookings doesn't have in our buildings in the core of our community a minimum maintenance code. So if you move into a storefront in downtown Brookings, the building you may be moving into does not meet certain minimum standards that can be a barrier to successfully launching a business there. Those are the types of things that I've learned from business owners and storefront managers, not just in the last year, but before that. And I think those are important conversations as we continue to think about how folks do business as, as individuals return to brick and mortar presence in the forefront.
Thank you. Patty?
Well, first and foremost, we need to shut up downtown and in our local small businesses and encourage others to do the same. I would agree with Nick Wendell in that we need to continue to promote those businesses, look forward to sharing that information and getting people downtown. I mean, events like Downtown at Sundown, I think, got folks, got folks downtown, and many of the small businesses started to stay open so that they could see a little bit of traffic. So we need to look for other ideas and incentives like that to get folks back to shopping downtown with our locally-owned businesses. I think the vaccinations, as has been mentioned, is going to help a lot. We're all going to feel safer going places where there are other individuals. So I think if we just all use our common sense, but really promote our locally-owned businesses, that's the thing that we can do that will really help our town reignite.
This next group of questions is about leadership and how you will approach problem-solving. Isaiah, we're going to start with you. Our first question is, what is motivating you to serve on city council? And if elected, what are your top three priorities for your term as a city councillor? Isaiah?
Could you repeat the question, please?
Yes, Kelsey, don't start the time. What is motivating you to serve on city council? If elected, what are your top three priorities for your term as city councillor? Isaiah?
Alrighty. The top three things that I want to do, number one, I want to make sure that the city council sticks to their job description. Their, their job is to manage policy. We have to stay in our lane. I want them to, to get out of the way of small business. Number two, my platform would be to don't spend, invest. We want to make sure every dollar is allocated in the right place. Our budgeting process should reflect a constant investment in our city, not just blind spending. A good example of that was how the current city council and city attorney handled some of the jail expansion from the county. Their decisions actually cost the taxpayer about two-point-five million dollars, and that's something that I want to make sure that those outcomes don't happen. Lastly, listen to those impacted. We have to make sure that we're having a, creating that communication channel between the community members and the council to making sure that our voters are being heard. What's motivating me? I want to live here. I love this place. I'm not going anywhere. My business is here. My family is here. Every aspect of my life is here, and I just want to make Brookings better. I love it.
Thank you. Nick Wendell.
Well, I love serving in Brookings. I've loved serving in Brookings on the council and in a lot of other ways. Even in challenging times, it's just a hugely rewarding experience. So that's, that's motivation for me. Some of my priorities include, as Isaiah noted, budget management. I'm really proud of, in my time on the council, we've instituted a ten-year capital improvement plan that allows us to forecast ten years, ten fiscal years into the future, how we're allocating resources. I want to continue to see projects like that forward. We've had a balanced budget in Brookings the last three fiscal years, which means we've not relied on any reserves, even though you've seen some really sizable programs happening in Brookings. I want to continue to promote collaboration with stakeholders, the health system, the university, the school district, the Chamber of Commerce, and economic development. And finally, I want to continue to support quality-of-life initiatives, the Bicycle Master Plan, an investment in downtown Brookings. We're launching a Parks Master Plan right now, and maintaining our current amenities that make Brookings a special place to live. Those are the types of projects I want to continue to focus on.
Thank you, Nick. Patty, you're next.
My top three, why am I serving, or why am I motivated to serve? I moved here voluntarily four times. I've always loved Brookings. I've never left because I wanted to. And I was also raised that you have a life of service, and when I saw the opportunity to serve in this capacity on council, I decided that it was something that I could use my skills and my expertise to be supportive of the community. My top three priorities, one is affordable housing, and we can have a long discussion about that, but we're a long way from having enough affordable housing in our community. We have a serious shortage. We need to continue to focus on drainage issues. We're surrounded by water, and we really can't expand much more. I'm already worried about I'm already worried about some of the development in the south part of our community because just too much water. So with that, we have to continue to plan our infrastructure very carefully as we look at where it's safe to expand.
Thank you. Nate Holden. Nate, you're on mute.
Let me unmute myself first. Motivating me to serve, it's kind of like I briefly touched on earlier. I dealt with some things with city council going back 15 plus years with businesses and and just feeling like they don't, that they have their own agendas and they don't have this voice for the community and I, I want to be that voice. Top three issues, budgeting, what, what are we doing? Why are we involved in things? You know, we have great things that the city's involved in, get from the Swift Health Center, but how can we make that run more efficient? Things like looking at other entities that the city owns, from park departments to the liquor store to whatever. How do we justify that we're in all of some of this stuff? And how do we maybe get out of some of it if it's the right thing to do? I want to look at all of that. And then I guess, you know, thirdly is, is just what can we do to retain people in Brookings? What can we do to make them want to stay in the summer?
Thank you. Nick Schmichael.
The motivation is because I'm a citizen and being a citizen is about being committed to the whole. It's, it's really important. We've got to start working together and continue, continuing to bring together, bring people together. I touched on this in my opening, but workforce development is a, is a key focus of mine. We've got to help our employers get employees, but make sure that employees have the quality of life that they want here. And I think strengthening, like I said, strengthening our partnerships is going to get us there. Post pandemic city finances is something that's a key initiative of mine. Just bringing people together to continue to focus on innovation. And really, a lot of this dovetails in, but SDSU, making sure that our students feel welcome in this community and start being more active in our community. Studies show that when students become more active, they're more apt to volunteer, more apt to live here. And if they leave, they're more apt to come back to start a family.
Thank you. Nick Wendell, we're going to start with you on the next question. How do you plan to carry out the role of councillor within the Brookings City Manager, City Council form of government? And how do you see your role in working with the city manager? Nick?
Well, I, I've learned a lot about the interaction that our city council has in Brookings with city staff and I really commend, commend our city staff. They've been visionary in, in making more transparency in our budget related decisions and helping us to plan around maintenance and ongoing needs and existing facilities and spaces. A lot of that has been under the direction of the city manager. As councillors, we work closely with the city manager and and the director team and it all continue to do that. Opening those lines of communication are crucial. I just referenced the 10-year capital improvement plan. That plan has worked so well that starting in fiscal year 23, we're going to begin to implement five-year plans at a department level, which will just continue to open up the lines of communication between the city manager and key staff in the council. So we're hearing their voices. They're working with user groups and volunteer boards and commissions to understand what's happening out in those departments and in those spaces. And as councillors, we're hearing from the manager and from his key staff members on, on the perspective of what, what they're seeing out in their departments as they serve the community.
Nate Holden.
Working with the city manager and the mayor's, the city council is a, I guess a little something that we're going to have to take a hard look at and see why do we do some of the things we do? And, you know, why, why do we approach it this way and not ways that other cities do it? I understand the benefits of having that city manager and he's got his thumb on the, on all the, these things. But as a city council, we're the elected officials who are in there and we need to maybe step up and have a little more say in certain things and, and do things for the community that are better instead of, you know, two raises during this pandemic for a city council or for a, a city manager and things like that. I think we need to use our money wisely and not just let someone like that, things like that go on. I think we need to be a little more involved than, than maybe what we have been as a city council.
Thank you. Nick Schmichael.
You know, one of the things about four years ago that got put together was our master plan. It was a 40-year plan and that thing, it's fantastic. I mean, hours, weeks went into that, study sessions, and we have a roadmap as council, which is, which is great. And, and we need to continue to follow that roadmap. That is what the community wants. In terms of that's, that's pretty much what your job is on council, making sure what you have or what the community wants, getting that information to the city manager and city staff and letting them execute and knowing and trusting our city staff that they are doing what they're doing. And if something is not happening with what the community wants, that is one time when council can step in and make that correction.
Thank you. Patty Bacon.
We established the Home Rule Charter here in Brookings in the 1990s. And with the Home Rule Charter comes a city manager and a city council the way ours functions. And that is that the council sets policy and the agenda and the city manager and staff implement the policies that are determined by the council. So I like this form of government. I feel it's working well. I love our master plan. A lot of thought went into that. A lot of community members were able to weigh in on that. And it's our job as council and we did that during our last retreat is to review all of those priorities that were determined in the master plan and work on those that are the most achievable or the most budget friendly right now and determine the order that we will get the entire plan implemented.
Thank you. Isaiah.
Yes, I, I like this question because it goes to a lot of the things that we as business owners see. If we're a small business owner, a lot of times we make the decisions day to day. One of the reasons why I like this form of government is that, like Councilman Bacon said, that the city council sets policy and then from that, the city manager is able to have the administration in the different departments to make sure there's no hiccups with that. So he can make, and he, in this position, he can make those decisions a lot faster than we as a council could meet together and make those decisions. So keeping the city council to stick to policy, getting the city manager to making sure that he's enacting that policy. I really like that we have a plan moving forward. I think that what we've done in the last number of years of organizing our budget has been incredible. I've been able to take a look at that. It's fantastic. But one thing I want to make sure that we're doing is we're also allowing him to run the, the city like a business. And so I'm appreciative of that because he's able to make, make those decisions really quickly.
Thank you. For our next question, Patty, we're going to start with you. How would you describe the city's current financial position?
I would say that we're in an amazingly good place. The minute the pandemic began last year, our city manager sat down with our staff and said, we need to make cuts now to a budget that had already been approved and said, okay. And every department did. They went through and fine tuned and reduced every dollar they could in their individual budgets. And because of that, that made us very responsible. As it turned out, our revenues were much better than projected because of, of, you know, what we thought would be our cuts. And so we've been able to maintain and not really decrease services to our community. And that comes from responsible budgeting and from good planning.
Thank you. Nate Holden.
We are a community that, or a city council and staff that tries to have a balanced budget. That's a good thing. But looking out towards the future and, and having a surplus, I think Isaiah talked on this a little bit, is, is saving, not spending all the time. There's, there's lots of things we do as a city council that maybe aren't the greatest ideas and, and that's what we need to work on. You know, we spend so much money on certain things that, that basically break even at best. We, we're doing good at the moment, but what are we going to be in the future? And that's, that's what scares me. And that's why I'm running is, you know, how many businesses closed during this last year that are never going to reopen or are never going to recoup? And how is that going to affect income to Brookings?
Thank you. Nick Schmichael.
I think when, when all this started last year, the biggest concern we had as a city was in terms of city finance was our sales tax numbers. And thankfully, those numbers did not get as hard of hit as we thought. Paul and staff have made cuts. I've seen that through the visit Brookings Board and the Swift Health Center Advisory Board just to try to get us through. And I'm thankful that everybody took a hard look at that as well to keep us in a decent financial position. Moving forward, I just think we need to really continue to drive sales tax revenue because that's ultimately 41% of our city budget comes from sale tax. And just continuing to make sure we, I want to keep those quality of life initiatives and I really don't want to see our outside agencies hurt. There's a lot of agencies after this pandemic that are going to need help and I do not want to see those harmed.
Thank you. Isaiah.
Yes. I think it's good, not great. I think that when we look back at the last year, it could have been a lot worse. And so we are very grateful that we only saw about a 2% decrease in that sales tax. So we're very blessed as a community for that. But I do want to remind people just like where that comes from. You know, we saw Hy-Vee, Walmart, Lowe's, and some of these other industries have really good years. As well as if we were at home, we also did a lot of shopping online. So I think it's important for the community members to know that when you do shop online, yes, sales tax is still collected by the city. However, a lot of that money is spent. It doesn't actually stay here. The, the money that's spent on Amazon might not actually stay in this community. But I think looking forward to the future, I think that considering that we haven't lost that much, we're in a much better financial position than a lot of us expected to be in. And I think we have a lot to be grateful for as a city. I would like to see us improve that to making sure that we're, we're making wise investments in our community.
Thank you. Nick Wendell.
I think if we went back a year, I would, I would say we all expected much more catastrophic results in terms of revenues. We were about 1.9% off in sales tax revenue. We had various projections from our CFO and from our city manager throughout the year. And as a council, we course corrected multiple times. If there were excess revenues that we hadn't anticipated, we directed those to our community partners and some of those outside agencies to provide essential services. Areas where we did see a sharper decline, of course, were in tourism related taxes. That third B tax, you can imagine, took a sharp decline with no large scale concerts, no home football season, summer events that typically drive lots of traffic into the community. So as we see some of those return, we hope to rebound, but it may take some time. It's not as though everybody will swing back to normal behavior. So I think we have to prepare for a year ahead that, that has the potential to be volatile as well. And, and I commend our staff to continue providing us very updated information as we make sound budget decisions.
Thank you. On our next question, we will start with Nick Schmichael. The question, the state's attorney has stated that meth is still the number one criminal activity problem in Brookings County. What can city council do to address this problem? Nick?
I, I think it's really important to continue to work with and make sure that we're dealing, working with substance abuse, partnerships with the Brookings Health System, as well as really supporting the police department. There's not really much more I can think of other than that. The county, the, the state's attorney has started a diversion program, but that's not for meth. I've heard a lot about this. My nephew's a highway patrolman for, and I know how critical and bad this, this, it's, it's an epidemic really is. And I continuing to work with our health system, our behavioral health professionals and working with our police department to ensure that we're keeping our community safe.
Nick Wendell.
Yeah, State's Attorney Nelson did note that meth continues to be in meth related charges continue to be the biggest issue his office confronts year after year. I think one of the things that we can do is be good partners. You know, it's not just an issue for Brookings County or law enforcement or healthcare providers. I, I think we can be partners. Part of, I think, our challenge around meth is that as a society, we don't do a great job of addressing some of the underlying correlating issues to meth use. Oftentimes there's underlying trauma or mental health issues. Then it ripples into the experience those folks have in our community with housing and employment and transportation and access to mental health. And so when we can put items like that forward as a city and provide support to some of those agencies, we not only can do some practical good, but we can increase the awareness level. I think about the work we did on mental health in recent years in partnership with the Empowerment Project. As a council, we put about $4,000 forward to help them open transition housing. It wasn't enough, but putting it on our agenda and having a community conversation about it brought some resources to bear from other partnering agencies and just increased awareness across the community.
Isaiah.
This is a good question. It definitely impacts many aspects of our community. A, a lot of times the addicted are often victims in this and I think it would be wise as a community to remember that. Just like if you look at a snake, you wouldn't go for its tail. We want to make sure that we're going for the head. Even though the city council is involved in more policy decisions, we have to make sure our police force is supported. We have to make sure they're well funded to, to break up distribution pipelines within the city, but also making sure that our partnerships with the county and state law enforcement are also well, well communicatory on those. We also have to get not just tougher on crime, but we also have to get smarter on crime. And that's not my slogan. That's from the State's Attorney Nelson. But we have to, we have to be advocates for programs like Drug Court. I think that's what Nick Schmichael was mentioning earlier when it came to the diversion program, which is for alcohol. The Drug Court is for that. But we have to take a long-term preventative approach. So organizations like the Brookings County Youth Mentoring Program, building relationships, fostering that, the Boys and Girls Club. Those are organizations I'd love to support to help our community.
Thank you. Nate Holden.
Yeah, everybody's kind of touched on parts of this, but a, a big thing is, is yeah, working better with the police, what can we do for them, with them? And what can we do to help them be easier to work with other communities and state levels with things? And meth's already illegal. I don't know that we're going to pass any legislation there that's going to make it more illegal. But maybe as touched on again, getting that word out there, more information and trying to get less of a stigma on it. I think when it's, when you feel so bad about things, you just, you feel like you have nowhere to go. But if we feel like we have a good talking community and, and you need some help, let's, let's help you. And it not feelings like you're such a horrible person or whatever that feeling you're having because of these issues you're having, that we're able to have that better conversation with them and maybe find a better solution to helping them out.
Thank you. Patty.
Yes, I think most of the key issues have been touched on. I'm very grateful that our state's attorney has been so creative in how he has been addressing this and improving it. I think public education is huge and that's something we as a council can support. And then those partnerships that have been mentioned with our police department and behavioral health. We all have, this is a community issue and we all have to keep looking at ways that we as a community can address this and try to reduce the reasons for addiction before they become addicted. And poverty and mental health issues are usually the key issues that lead people to drugs. And so if we would look at the core issues, then I believe that's something we as council can do and that will help the others in this issue.
Thank you. We'll be starting our next question with Nick Wendell. Nick, what role does the city play in growth? What is your vision for Brookings development over the next 15 to 20 years, given our infrastructure and drainage challenges?
Well, you know, growth and, and planning and development needs to be a top priority for the council and staff moving forward. We are a landlocked community. We've invested in the type of staff expertise and technology that can help us map out residential, industrial and commercial growth, where we have developable land left. Some of those metrics indicate that we have maybe 15 to 20 years of developable land left. I think it's important that we look at the reinvestment and rehabilitation of existing neighborhoods that are already connected to infrastructure, streets and sewer and drainage and lights. I think that's one place we start. From a commercial perspective, I think there's opportunities to encourage growth, incentivizing the development of certain properties that are connected to existing industrial or commercial land. All of that, of course, is interconnected. I think also about I think also about, from a planning and development perspective, when I talk about the existing neighborhoods in the core of our community, we have to incentivize property owners because from a residential perspective, of course, if you own a property.
Thank you. Nick Schmichael?
Yeah, the, the, the frustrating fact about Brookings is if you look at our water table, we're basically in, the city is in the middle of a giant net. Which forces us really to grow, you know, we can't really grow out. We have to grow up. I, I just looked and part of the thing, we have twenty seven active listings for houses today. But I do believe we have to work on prioritizing developers and, and allowing development to happen at the, at the market that it is. We, I, I agree with Nick with the, with redevelopment of certain areas. There, there, there's only one way to go with the land that we have and it's, it's going up. Re, rezoning potentially to make houses smaller, closer together and allowing old houses to maybe be torn down, to be developed into duplexes, triplexes and other, maybe courthouse, courthouse style backyard developments.
Thank you. Nate Holden?
Yeah. It's been touched on. Everybody knows that Brookings, yeah, with the aquifer and everything around, it's, it's tough. So we need to look at, are there things we can do? Are there areas outside that maybe we have to kind of leapfrog, certain areas to get to? And, and we have a, a setup of the city that's maybe a little bit more like Rapid City where there's, it's spread out a little more and there's things in between where there just isn't anything because you can't grow there. What do we do with that drainage? Just is another big question. There's plenty of, of businesses that want to do things with that as well. And I think maybe we need to bring it to the people and see some of these businesses, what, what, what can we do? As a city council member, maybe we're not as informed. Obviously, we have staff that we can talk to, but there's other issues there. And I think Nick Wendell was, was touching on this is, is the rezon, or the incentivizing things for things in towns that we can get rid of, maybe lack, better terms, more areas and we can incentivize them to get housing.
Thank you. Isaiah?
Thank you. You know, as a business owner, we're always trying to find better ways to improve our, our business. And same thing with developers. Developers are incredibly smart individuals. And so with that, a lot of times if we try to do too much as city councilors, sometimes we might take too many steps forward and not realize what the decisions we're making on. And we're actually using taxpayer money sometimes to do that. So I would actually, I would, I would, I would think that we actually need to take a more leave, letting public stay public and letting private stay private. I'd like to see developers bring new and fresh ideas with those type of things because they're the ones who are going to be the ones that we actually need to make the investment, whereas the city can only provide so many resources. So I would like to see the city council support any private industry to come in and encourage us on what we could do to help make the city better. But as, as we know clearly, there's a lot of houses that are occupied in this town. So growth is present and accounted for. So I don't think we'll have an issue with smart developers or smart industries coming in and trying to help our community grow. We just have to be ready for it.
Thank you. Patty?
Yes, we, we have to look at, as much as we dislike it, but because we are landlocked, we have to look at higher density. And that's hard for South Dakotans. We think we should have an acre of land with every house. And so changing that mindset is a very challenging thing to do in our localities. But it is the only way that we can grow with any significance is if we start to look at what, what could those higher density projects look like? And I was involved with one that I hope gets built soon. On Fifteenth Street South and Seventh Avenue South, we had a, a little contest to developers to see how they could maximize that land. Traditionally, it would only have ten, ten traditional lots on it. But the, the design that was chosen will have eighteen units, some owner occupied and some rental. But it's a beautiful aesthetically nice development. I can't wait to see it.
Thank you. Oh, I'm having trouble with mute. Isaiah, we're going to start with you this time. Another resident would like to know what you think are the greatest challenges and opportunities for Brookings in the next three to six years?
Greatest challenges, we've already touched on some of them. The greatest challenges is our land and storm drainage. We have to take a look at our infrastructure and make sure that we're prepared for the future. The other thing is recovering from some of the issues that have transpired in the last, you know, eighteen months or so. So I think that for us as, as community members, we need to make sure that we're, we're taking a look at, at history. We're taking a look at the future, making sure that we're weighing all the options on what we can do, making sure we're having a great foundation for not only our children, but also our children's children. So making sure that the infrastructure that we're putting down, if we choose to go up, making sure that we can actually do those things and do it in a proper way so that we're not rebuilding, you know, ten, fifteen years from now, just to try and, and make a short term gain for a long term loss.
Thank you. Nick Wendell?
Well, we have spent some time talking about the challenges in front of us. I think, of course, the return to normalcy will be a key challenge in the short term as we move forward together. Planning and development, as I just touched on, continues to be a challenge for us in reference to land usage, but also drainage planning will be a challenge for us. And as we implement that comprehensive master plan, a couple of the other candidates spoke about density. There are certain districts in the community that call for additional density and some of the folks in those neighborhoods, of course, that'll be new and that'll be a challenge as we transition together and think about how we use that land. We've got tremendous opportunities in front of us. I hope we get a chance to talk about the Interstate Twenty-Nine Interchange Project at Twentieth Street South. That's a game changer for Brookings and we're hoping that project will be completed by twenty twenty-three. As a city, not necessarily as an organization, but collectively as a community, we have an opportunity to think about how we develop that property. I'm also excited to continue the implementation of the Bicycle Master Plan, not just as recreation, but as a transportation opportunity in the community.
Thank you. Nate Holden?
Yeah, everybody's talked about it in different aspects. Yeah, challenges definitely both. And, and not just in where can we go, but how do we keep that growing? You know, if we don't have places for people to come, are they going to move into town? SDSU continues to get more and more students every year. When they're not living on campus, where are they going to live? If we don't have room, we're going to stall everything out. So we definitely need to fix or address and fix those issues. And then, you know, further on, yes, the, the, the drainage issues and and again, it's, it's a city council saving money for that and, and being prepared. We can, we can have a master plan and assume this is what's going to happen. But if we don't have funds there for when inevitably something doesn't go the way we hoped it would, then we're going to be, have to now take from other resources to address.
Thank you. Patty Bacon?
Obviously, and it's been touched on, the, the, the land issues, the storm drainage issues and the recovering from COVID are all key in this next short term. But long term, again, we have to come back to affordable housing. And unfortunately, the problem there is that we can't build housing that is affordable to even most middle income people. If you talk to the folks at South Dakota Housing, if you talk to individuals here in Brookings, everything's more expensive, land's more expensive, materials are more expensive, the lumber jump that we just had. So that's going to continue, not just for lower income families, but for those middle income families as well. And so we have to, you know, look to see if there are any incentives that we can provide as a city to help address that issue.
Thank you. Nick Schmichael?
For me, and it's been touched on, but recovery is still going to be ongoing for the next three to six years. This isn't just going to be a one year and done type of thing. We have to keep looking at that and ensuring that not only as a city council, but as a community as a whole, we're supporting, supporting our local businesses. And that in turn helps support the city. I, I'm glad this did get touched on. I hope we get to expand on, but that, the interchange is a big thing for our community, for development and, and just continuing to look at the way, I'm really glad I looked at that as a, that's a two million dollar, you don't typically get a two million dollar or invest something for two million dollars and get a twenty million dollar return. That was a great investment. I'm very happy we did it. But not just looking at, at development in the next three to six years, but we also have to continue to look at development to the next twenty, thirty, forty years. Had we maybe looked at developing to the northeast prior to SDSU putting in the cattle complex, we may have been able to develop some housing up there. And I just don't think there's a palette for being around that right now. But just continuing to develop for the future.
Thank you. The next question, we will start with Nate. And you've touched a little bit on this, but this is specifically about housing. Many in Brookings believe we are facing an affordable housing crisis. What is your understanding of the, the affordable housing issue in Brookings? And what can the mayor and city council do to address the crisis? Nate?
Get off mute there. Yeah, affordable cap, housing is, is an issue. Patty touched on this, you know, our land's a premium year, so that does make housing get more expensive. How do we get around that? I mean, I think part of it is we need to maybe do some incentives. Like I said before, landlords trying to, what can they do as a landlord to maybe have that affordable renting areas? And we can start with things like that that they can reduce their rent because we've given them incentives as landlords, if they keep the upkeep of their house so that it doesn't look as bad as it does. Whatever that, whatever that is, we just need to sit down and have that conversation of, of what can we do to, to create affordable renting to start with? And then from there, we can move to affordable buying. And this, this lumber charge is going to hopefully fix itself eventually. And, and the building of that will, will help out. But if we don't have room to expand or
Thank you. Thank you. Isaiah?
Thanks, Andy. You know, this is a really tough question because it is that goes back to that supply and demand. And we have so many people that want to live here within the city of Brookings. And we have a lot of property owners that live here as well. And it's, it's not easy to find affordable housing. That's definitely an issue that all of the candidates, I think, would agree on. The challenging part is a lot of candidates have, have made this a platform to run on. But as we, we've seen, there hasn't been too many things that have actually come to pass in the last number of years, even though this has been an ongoing issue for a number of years. Personally, I would like to see, see Brookings create an open communication with our surrounding, surrounding communities and towns, places like Aurora, Vogga, Elkton, Bruce, White, these, these other areas to where we can potentially either influence or help in some shape or fashion them create infrastructure for some more affordable housing. Because by twenty twenty, by twenty thirty, I believe, we're going to be pretty much out of land. So for affordable housing, it's not going to be looking too good. So I'd like to see what we can do in the surrounding communities to help them help us solve this issue.
Thank you. Patty?
I've mentioned it a little bit already, is to incentivize things like smaller lots, smaller setbacks, so that we can get more homes. I mentioned the development where it would have traditionally been ten and we're going to have eighteen units in that same amount of land. So that's that higher density, learning how to deal with that. We also have to look at existing structures in our community and rehabilitate some neighborhoods and some housing and find ways to incentivize that to get done. Many communities have been doing that, providing incentive structures to do that. We have a, a number of, unfortunately, not, not unfortunately, but we have, most of our lower income families live in mobile homes and many of those mobile homes are in dire need of repair. So we have to find a program to help them improve that.
Thank you, Patty. Nick Schmichael?
Yeah, in twenty sixteen, the East Central Real Estate Group hired the THARP Planning Group, I believe is what it was called, to do a little study on Brookings. And what they found in there, one important thing that they found was Brookings is missing the middle. We have a lot of single family homes and we have a lot of high density apartment complex, but we're missing duplexes, triplexes, those things. And I think developers have kind of responded for that. If you look since twenty sixteen, we've seen more duplexes, we've seen more triplexes get developed in town and a lot of them are being sold very quickly. One thing that's important to know, I know that TIPS are always talked about, but that also does mean raising taxes. And with the way property is right now, that you, really, we have to see if the community, if that's going to be palatable as well. I, I mean, that all, that all comes together into the cost of owning a home. So it's, it's going to be a collective thing, but I think letting the developers develop what they've been doing is, is what we need to continue.
Thank you. Nick Wendell?
You know, I might push back a little bit on the notion that we've not made any progress on affordable housing. I think in recent years, we've taken great efforts to build strong public and private partnerships to address this issue. A lot of you are familiar with the Affordable Housing Task Force that relied heavily on input from the development community and the Realtor community. As a city, we've been really open and flexible to changes in zoning regulations, smaller lot sizes and setbacks, which ultimately impact the cost of development and ultimately the cost of homes. As Councilor Bacon noted, we do have two emerging affordable housing neighborhoods. Those are really challenging to get off the ground. And so I think that hopefully will, will provide a model for how we can do that successfully. I've spoken already about the investment in existing neighborhoods that are already linked to infrastructure. Something else that we have implemented is a design review team that meets at least once a month, if not twice a month, which really streamlines the experience for developers and builders. It's an internal process, but it makes the, it, it can shorten the time to build and improve the experience for developers and builders. A challenge in front of us, of course, is increasing labor and lumber costs and we'll have to be mindful of that.
Thank you. Patty, we're going to start our next question with you. Brookings is home to the largest university in South Dakota. Describe your view of the relationship between Brookings and SDSU. What is your vision of the relationship between Brookings and the university over the next ten years? Patty?
I went backwards. I hope we continue to always look at ways to improve that relationship. Every year we seem to go, sometimes the university initiates projects with the community. Sometimes the, the community initiates projects with the university. But I live in what we call a university neighborhood. We have a lot of university rentals here and I love having college students around. That's why we bought in this neighborhood. But I, I think the key is to make those students feel part of our community. We want them to stay here. We hope that we have employment opportunities for them when they are finished. And we have an economic development group that is always looking for those opportunities and how we can train them to fit into our industries. So I, it's an ongoing process.
Thank you. Isaiah?
Thank you. SDSU is one of the, it is the largest employer here in Brookings. So I think we have to be careful how we, you know, we make decisions in our community without factoring them in in some shape or fashion. But I think that what we need to do as a Brookings city and community is we need to make sure that we're communicating clearly, not just with SDSU, but also with our large entities. So what I would like to propose is that we have one representative from the university, one representative from the city, so that what that would do is create a streamline of communication between these two people, individuals. That way, we're not chatting across multiple committees, multiple departments. So that when projects need to get done, when problems need to be solved, we can actually create those solutions so that the city's not left hanging, SDSU's not left hanging, which really ultimately would help the city and SDSU build together because we have to communicate. It's a big part of who we are.
Thank you. Nick Wendell?
I think we all can acknowledge that the existence of the state's largest public institution in Brookings has a tremendous impact on, on workforce and economic development, on the culture and the experience of living in Brookings. That relationship is crucial. From an economic development standpoint, of course, the presence of SDSU and the types of programs that, that our state's land-grant institution has helps us recruit major industry. Bell Brands is a more recent example, but there are smaller scale examples of companies that exist in Brookings because SDSU exists here. When I think about the culture of our city, local events, the museums, arts and entertainment, I think do more to build programs together to retain students, but also to encourage retirees to come back to Brookings. The presence of SDSU is a big part of it. I think we've got phenomenal communication right now. We've got a president and president down at the institution and a city manager I think we've got phenomenal communication right now. We've got a president and president down at the institution and a city manager in Paul at the city of Brookings that communicate regularly and have a great partnership, which I do think informs our understanding of what's happening on the campus and vice versa.
Thank you. Nate Holden?
Yeah, you guys got me?
Yes.
Lost something with the computer, so I tried to sign in here. What, I guess I had happened right at the start of this, so I missed what the question was again.
Sure. Brookings is home to the largest university in South Dakota. Describe your view of the relationship between Brookings and SDSU. What is your vision of the relationship between Brookings and the university over the next 10 years?
Yeah. Brookings and SDSU, they've gone hand in hand for quite a while. You know, most people are jackrabbits there in Brookings, not everybody. But even those that aren't, they do appreciate what the college, the university does for the town and and what the town does for the university. I think we work well together, but we need to work together. I think there's been some times where we've taken initiative, or SDSU has taken initiative to drive things for us, and we need to walk hand in hand, not being led by one or the other. Things like investing in the PAC Center, when we had our own Swifel Center for things like that. Was that a good investment for us? Was that led by SDSU or was that a decision by the city council? Again, a better give and take instead of a just always give, give kind of attitude. And when we do that, the city thrives, SDSU thrives.
Thank you. Nick?
Me, right? Yeah, I mean, if you look at SDSU, it is one of our largest assets as a community. You look at some of our largest employers. It is the largest employer, but look at Daktronics. That started by two professors that saw that as an asset to help students find jobs after graduation, which also keeps students here. They start families. They eventually grow up and retire here. I mean, it's a huge asset to our, to our community. Just keeping that relationship intact is vital, but for me, it's also engaging students into the community, hosting events, inviting them, getting them out across Sixth Street to the south and coming and enjoying our community so they feel welcome here. I look at SDSU, look at the last thing our community got together and around the whole town, Game Day. It was huge. And I feel like the jackrabbits just bring us together, and we have to keep that relationship strong.
Thank you. Nick, stay unmuted. We're going to move to you for our next question. How will you represent all community members, especially those who are often unheard?
You were talking to me, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. You know, being, this community has done a great job in terms of some of the things that's put in place. The inclusion resolution was a great step forward in making sure that all citizens are feeling, feel welcome and representative. It is crucial that we have a community that works together and just focusing on those things and making sure that everybody feels safe. Because when everybody feels safe and welcome in their community, the community as a whole does better. And it relies on people looking out for one another. It relies on businesses looking out for other businesses. It relies on community members looking out for other community members. Keeping those initiatives intact, we have some great people working on that as well with our Human Rights Commission. And I really appreciate all the work that is done in the future and look forward to other initiatives that we can work for to bring us all together.
Thank you. Isaiah?
Thank you. Yeah, we're one of the most diverse places in South Dakota, and we're a very welcoming community, and everyone would agree that we have equality for all. I would say from, excuse me, from an individual level, if there is a need or an injustice or something that's done, as a counselor, I want to be all ears to that person. And sometimes it's not, it's not easy to just sit down and write an email. But I would like to make myself available to that person. I mean, I love coffee. People who know the coffee shops in town would definitely know that I frequent them often. I would love to just sit down and have, have coffee with them, have a long conversation with them to make sure that they feel heard and represented by me as a city councillor.
Thank you. Nick Wendell?
When we passed the Resolution on Inclusivity in 2017, it passed unanimously through the council, but our conversation that night was really centered on the importance of not just using words, but following up with action, not just to talk the talk, but to walk the walk. And I'm really proud of the work we have done since then. It's an ongoing march. But we have instituted the types of policies and programs and worked with volunteer boards and commissions that earned us a perfect 100 score on the Human Rights Commission's Municipal Equality Index. Very few communities receive a perfect 100 score, and we've gotten it three years in a row. I think part of that demonstrates our council and our organization and our community's willingness to listen to marginalized populations. We've also worked closely with volunteer boards and commissions that focus on disability awareness and the Human Rights Commission. And I think that continues to take, you know, push action beyond just language around inclusivity.
Thank you. Patty?
I've had the opportunity in the last several years to work with a number of groups of individuals who live in our community, work in our community. One of them is the members of the Hispanic community who work here in Brookings, and they oftentimes work out on our large dairies. We have the most culturally diverse community in the state, and that's because we've been, always been welcoming to international students. Many of them stay, either become faculty or work in the community and become citizens of the United States. And I have worked with all of them. I have worked intimately with the Brookings Empowerment Project and dealing with our individuals who are, who face mental health issues and need some empowering themselves.
Thank you, Nate?
Yeah, I think some of the issues, you know, we're doing good things to have inclusivity, but some of the issues is when you're not feeling included, you don't feel you have that voice. And even if you do, you go to something like a city council meeting to raise an issue. It's very structured. It's very tough to get that, your point across in a little blurb that you're telling them. And then maybe there's a little back and forth, but it's very strict, structured and very strict. So, you know, as I talked before, I'd like to hold something where it's, whether it be a quarterly or a monthly thing, where it's just to sit down and chat. Everything is informal. We want you to come to it. And maybe if we do a monthly thing, this month, our focus is going to be on this. And so come in and talk to us. And you can have that back and forth, and you can have multiple people engaging at once and have more of a relaxed for, all right, I have a problem. We get your side of view. Now we can figure out how we're going to address it.
Thank you. We're going to go into our last question before closing statements. Isaiah, we will start this question with you, and a couple of you mentioned this, but talk about what you know about the interstate project or the interchange project and the opportunities or challenges that it might bring.
Way to go out with a bang. This is actually one of the, the things that I am not as well versed on. And so this is where I'd like a community input. But from what I know as a business owner, when we look at how much the current interchange has actually affected the Brookings community, if we add another one of those, that's going to make a large expansion for, for Brookings. So I would be interested at looking at what kind of developments we can do, how much we can actually invest as a city and what the return on that investment might be. Can we actually create some long-term investment by attracting, whether it's developers or other industries to that area? But I appreciate the question. I wish I had more knowledge of this topic, but this is one thing that I will definitely be looking into as a city councillor.
Thank you, Isaiah. Next, we'll go to Patty. You're off mute already, Patty?
Yeah, I guess I am. This has been a project that I've struggled with. I wasn't in favor of it when it first came before us, but I, and, and one of the issues that was used to sell it to us was the opportunity to develop more retail coming off that exit and in that part of 22nd Avenue in that area. Unfortunately, the retail market is not very viable these days in bricks and mortar, and so that's going to be difficult. We are going to have to find, as I think was Isaiah mentioned, some industries and some businesses who will be interested in utilizing that area.
Thank you. Nick Wendell?
I want to spend just a moment talking about the origins of that program. We had some surplus funding as a city council, and we're able to earmark $2 million to put toward this program, partnered with Brookings County and private donors to leverage that $5 million local commitment to earn a more than $18 million federal grant to bring this project to fruition. So it's just a phenomenal example of private and public partnerships that could bring a really important project to our community. I think we'll have an opportunity now, as this program comes to fruition in 2023, to really think about the opportunity for industrial development close to the interstate, some commercial development as we get close to 22nd Avenue, and increase traffic patterns into those residential neighborhoods and the Outdoor Adventure Center, the softball or the softball and soccer complexes in the southern part of town. I think the private sector is going to drive a lot of that. If there's work we can do as a council to encourage that kind of industrial, commercial and residential development, the interchange is just a huge opportunity for the community.
Thank you. Nick Schmichael?
Well, I said this earlier, and I'll say it again. I really love this project because there's very few times you can put $2 million into something and get a $20 million return on your investment. I mean, it's, it's, it's great. I think it's going to do a multitude of things. One, like Councilmember Wendell had stated, it will drive traffic to some of those things that we have on the south part of town. Could potentially bring in more events to those, the soccer fields, the softball complexes, make it easier to get there. But also, it's important for our community, the people that live here and work on the east side of Brookings, they now have a quicker connect to not just use the Sixth Street corridor. They can also, I view this as a quality of life, too. They can get to work easier, and we may see expansion to the east side of Brookings because of it. So I really look forward to this project, and I'm so happy it's going through.
Thank you. Nate Holden?
Yeah, I'll go kind of along the lines of Isaiah. I don't, I don't know enough to be super intelligent and how I spend or talk about it, but what he had touched on is we know about it, but we're not sure exactly what's going on. A lot of people, I think we need to have a better discussion with the community, like you said. I've talked to people that think it's the greatest thing in the world. The world's so good about it. It's going to be another road. And then you talk to people that it's the worst thing we've ever done. Well, what's bad about it? Well, I don't know. Why are we doing it? You know, so there's just, there's a lot of confusion out there as to what this is going to do for us, how we can use it to develop it, things. And we need to get that out there so that the whole community can get behind a project like this instead of we don't like it or we do, and we don't know why.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. For those of you who submitted questions and for taking the time to answer them, we're going to move now on to closing statements. Nick Wendell, we will start with you.
Thank you, Andy, and thank you to you for facilitating today. Thanks to Kelsey and her team at The Chamber and our sponsors for, for making this forum happen. And thanks to viewers and engaged citizenry that submitted questions and are participating this morning. I'm anxious to continue the conversation offline. We've got, you know, we're under, we're at 10 days till Election Day now. I just wanted to reiterate a couple of the points that I made this morning. My commitment to balancing the need to invest in important infrastructure projects, but also continuing to support quality of life initiatives and amenities that make Brookings unique. I think I've demonstrated in last year my ability to collaborate with all corners of our community and make informed decisions, and in particular, make level-headed decisions as a level-headed leader for the community. I have so much more to say on so many other topics. So I'd encourage you to visit nickforbrookings.com to learn more about my plans around topics like workforce development, addressing the mental health issue in our community, safety and security, affordable housing. I go in much more depth there and I'll continue to over the next 10 days. Thanks again.
Thank you. Isaiah?
Thank you, Andy, for moderating. Thank you to The Chamber for putting this on. Thank you to the sponsors. Thank you to everyone who's been so lively in this campaign process, and we look forward to April 13th. But born and raised here in Brookings area, I'm an SDSU alum, a small business owner, and I'm dedicated to our community. And I think this community is exceptional, and I want to make it grow and help that process move forward. I would be honored to represent you, the city of Brookings, on the city council. We do need to start supporting our small businesses better. We have to invest back in our community rather than waste millions. We must bridge the gap between our city and SDSU students. And as someone who's been on the opposite side of some of the city's mandates, the council does need to start listening and communicating to the community, especially those who have been affected by the mandates. I live here. I work here. I raise my family here. I invest my time and money here. And I look forward to serving the people of Brookings. So thank you very much for everyone who supports the small businesses and the Brookings community. Love you all.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to Nate Holden?
Yeah, been in Brookings 25 years, love this community, want to do what's best for the community as a whole and be a voice on the city council that you can come to and feel that not only am I going to listen to you, but I'm going to try to do what I can to implement things for the community, not just for certain groups, individuals. Want to, you know, be something that's fiscally responsible and, and looks at all sorts of things that the city does and how we can become a better government for you without oversight and without spending money on things that we don't need to. Thank you.
Thank you. Patty Bacon?
Thank you again to the Public Affairs Committee and The Chamber for hosting this. Thank you to everyone who's running. I find it exciting and stimulating when we do. There were too many years where we could barely fill the slate for folks to run. So having a larger candidate pool gives us the opportunity to exchange ideas and to get the community more engaged. So I want to thank everybody for that. This is a pivotal election, and we can't be short sighted about that. As conversations have formed around personal freedoms, public health and economic recovery, we must approach those concerns with informed, big picture considerations. And I hope that all of you will become actively engaged in this process. You can do that by talking to your friends and neighbors. We always have a low voter turnout. We would like a much larger turnout, so please get folks to the vote centers. You can donate your time and money to campaigns that you support. You can share your social media posts or theirs to help people get more engaged. Find ways to get them engaged and ask questions.
Thank you. Nick Schmichael?
To everybody who helped put this on and everybody listening at home, thanks so much. At home, Joni and I have a lot of conversations that typical about important topics like hate, people's rights, poverty, and what's best for our family and our small business. Most of these conversations lead us looking for multiple viewpoints, because it challenges us to be better, but also to adapt as things change. I know that this community is stronger together, and while I may not have all the answers, and I know I don't, I promise that I will always listen to the questions and concerns from the community as they happen. And we may disagree, and that's okay, but we can all be neighbors that are in this together. And I know we can agree that we all want what's best for our community, our family, our friends, and everybody that makes Brookings great. And I want to help lead the conversations that help us to align, to come together and to be stronger as a community. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you to all of the candidates and for those of you who are watching for engaging in our election process today. If you have additional questions for the candidates, I encourage you to reach out to them to get more information on these topics or others. And with that, Kelsey, I will turn it back to you.
Thank you so much. It's an exciting morning to have you all with us, so thank you for that. Thank you to our sponsors, and thank you to all of you who are going to get out April 13th and vote. With that, we have one last little announcement. The Chamber of Commerce will be hiring a full-time position coming here in the next week or two, and so I urge you all to be looking out for that. If you know individuals that would be interested in this kind of work, we're excited to add to our team. So thank you to Carrot Seed Kitchen Company, Banksour Financial, and SDSU Research and Economic Development. We're We're excited to see the results April 13th. And thank you all for your commitment to run. It takes courage to get out there and to make yourself so vulnerable. I know that our city would be great with any of you in leadership positions. So thank you, thank you, thank you. We will talk to you all soon. Have a great Saturday.